It is 7:02. I'm calling the meeting to order for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. And I'll go ahead and recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Bentley, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Michael Hardy.
Here.
Aaron Tuckfield.
Here.
Jasper Shuto.
Here.
Nunzio Provinzano. Not here. Charles Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, only Nunzio Provinzano is absent.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Shuto.
Go ahead, Mr. Shuto.
I'd like to exclude Member Provinzano from any roll call votes.
Motion made to exclude Mr. Provinzano from any no-call votes. Do I hear a second?
Support by Mr. Tuckfield.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield.
Second.
You know, well, because this is new, I would really like to do roll calls for what everything that we do. So we make it very clear to our audience that everybody has participated. So, Mr. Bentley, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman, Tuckfield.
Yes.
Member Shuto.
Yes.
Member Oliver.
Yes.
Member Hardy.
Yes.
Member Bentley? Yes.
Okay. Before we start item number four, I would like to introduce to you our new planner. Josh, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Yeah, Josh Box just came on board, what, about two, three weeks ago?
Uh, something like that.
Okay. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your background?
Uh, sure. So I officially actually started at the end of March, but obviously the offices weren't open and so I've really only been in the office for the past week and a half or so. I have been in the planning field for a couple of days now. Most recently, working on the consulting side, doing a lot of transportation planning work.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to share?
Uh, nothing comes to mind.
Okay. Well, on behalf of the planning commissioners, I'd like to welcome you. We're happy to have a new face and a new person in that position.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Item number four, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, this is Member Shuto. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the minute for March 3rd, 2020. If there's no additions, deletions, or corrections to be made.
Okay.
Support by Bentley?
Supported by Bentley. All right, Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Okay. Vice Chair, Tuckfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Shuto.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes.
Chairman Hardy.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bentley? Yes.
All right, very good, sir. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other motions, Commissioner Tuckfield would like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield.
This is Member Shuto. I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Secretary Bentley? Yes. Chairman Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Shuto?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Tuckfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, item number six, new business. Planned unit of development, conceptual plan preview. Review, Maddox Auto, permanent parcel 0836353023. And then we also have 0836353030 and 0836353033, located on the north side of Hall Road and 59 and the east side of North Avenue, section 36. Do we have, the petitioners in the audience, we'll start with you, Mr. Box. Are you there?
Yes, sorry. I thought you were calling the petitioner here. So you guys should have all received a packet. Hopefully you have that in front of you. We have a conceptual plan for a PUD, as you mentioned, near Hall Road and North Avenue. This conceptual plan includes a number of features, including a potential car wash, restaurants, and detail center. And it is zoned, I believe, a couple of different items. Was it O1 and C1, depending on which parcel yard we're in? Parcel A is C1.
Mr. Box, for the, for people in the audience that may not know what that is, can you explain what that is? C1?
Sure. The C1 is a commercial land use. O1 is an office land use with largely office. And as you would expect, commercial zone and use is allowed within those parcels.
Okay. All right, is that all, Mr. Box? Are you good?
Yep.
Okay. The petitioner, Mr. Zimmerman, are you on?
Yes, sir.
Please take your name and address for the record, just so we have it.
Sure. Carl Zimmerman. Address, home address, 1322 North Glengarry, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Zimmerman, go ahead.
Okay, well, I appreciate this time. I appreciate everyone's close attention and all the comments and involvement we've already had. So I am the owner and operator of Maddox Toyota, which is immediately to the east of this location. We relocated to that area just over two years ago. And I'm also the owner and operator of Maddox Chevrolet in Redford, Michigan, along with Maddox Auto Wash, right next to that at the corner of I-96 and Telegraph. So I've got some experience operating car wash now over the past two years. And we also have experience maintaining a wall between our existing businesses and a neighborhood in Redford. And in fact, that wall is nearly about a quarter mile. So we've been in that location since 1978. And we have expanded over the course of the past several years to basically double the amount of boundary that we share with our residents to our immediate west in that location in Redford. So we're very sensitive to the concerns of our neighbors and of the community and certainly grateful for the PUD, to the platform or the opportunity to look at this comprehensively and flexibly, considering the multiple stakeholders and potential for this development. I think everybody's aware this is four parcels owned by two different individuals. It's a very unique set of parcels. It's challenged in many respects to come up with a comprehensive use of it in a way to maximize the value for the sellers, as well as to maximize the potential tax base for the township and to maximize its utilization for the tenants or operators in this location to provide a good experience for the customers and users of these locations. So we spent a lot of time, over the course of several years, we were not, I was not looking to do this project. The owners of the property identified me as, with the Toyota store there, as the potential best user of that or a certain part of this parcel or parcels. And we spent a lot of time over the past couple of years looking at all the different alternatives and basically eliminated a whole bunch of options that really didn't fit. And we feel like we've come up with the best use of this property. So a couple of key features for us that really make it worthwhile for us is the access to eyeballs from the North Avenue traffic, as well as access for our prospective customers to the site off of North Avenue. So of course, with multiple uses here, we want to make sure that everybody that is on the site is able to use the access points conveniently, intuitively, comfortably, safely. And I'm very pleased with what we've come up with, primarily through our architect Shane Burley, who's on the call and is going to go through this in a moment. But just a couple of other comments to make about these. There's really four uses. So what you're looking at on the right-hand side, with all the vehicles parked there, that's essentially just inventory parking. And that provides us direct access right to the Toyota store right there. So it allows us to grow the business a bit and again, to store more vehicles. The car wash is something that is a synergistic operation with our existing Toyota operation and our customers. Of course, they're both automotive. It allows us to free up space within a Toyota facility to not have to dedicate that to cleaning and detailing, but at the same time, provide not just utilization for our operation, but for our customers and likewise to attract motorists to our location and hopefully be able to cross-market to them our Toyota offerings and used vehicle offerings and service and body shop offerings. So, and again, we have some familiarity and experience and success with our car wash in Redford. So we're excited about this design to take lessons learned from the site in Redford and apply those here and come up with a really a state-of-the-art experience for our customers in a very environmentally friendly operation as well. The detail center, just to make a quick mention of that. Quite frankly, I have no immediate plans to build that. Our Toyota business will need to continue to grow and develop to support, in order to support that investment. But again, as we look at this unique configuration, there's not a lot of businesses that would benefit from this without, you know, access or visibility from the road. So this is a complementary business potentially that would support the existing operations, both the car wash and the Toyota operation. But that is, we just, since we're going through this whole PUD, we think that's the best use of it if we can be successful enough to warrant that further development. The restaurant, Sedona Cafe or Sedona Grill, I'm sorry. The owner of that has two operations already. They are looking at expanding to a couple of different locations. The global pandemic has impacted their plans for continued growth and expansion. I talked to the operator the other day, who's a longtime friend of mine. And he is still very interested in the location. But given the current state of flux with the pandemic, we don't have a clear timetable on that, other than that he was very comfortable with me telling you all today that he's very interested in that location and hopes to be part of this development. So that's kind of an overview. We, again, I'd just make a final comment for now that we have had a wonderful relationship, working relationship with our community in Redford, with our residents, the neighborhood, our customers throughout the region. We are a top 10 Chevrolet dealer nationally. We're a six-time Chevrolet Dealer of the Year award winner. We're a four-time Power Detroit Power Magazine Best Dealership Award winner. We're a top place to work, as voted by Free Press readers and a three-time Automotive News 100 Best Dealerships to work for. So we've got some built-up credibility over time by delivering on our promises and being good neighbors and putting people first. And the same is true with our relationship with the elected officials and all the folks that work in the township there. So we're grateful for the assistance and support we received from this board back in January of 17, when we needed a little bit of variance on the Toyota building before we could consummate that deal and satisfy Toyota's requirements and optimize our opportunities to have success in that location where several other automotive dealerships have been unsuccessful. So anyway, we're grateful for this opportunity and for your guys' consideration here.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, sir.
This is Chairman Hardy. Can you identify where the Dairy Queen is in the business office for our audiences? There's a Dairy Queen, and then the business office would be on the corner of North Avenue and Hall Road. Okay, those are already established businesses. Okay, that's what I needed. Ryan, before we get into questions, can I get questions from the community here? Or do we have to save that until the end?
That's up to you guys. We can open it up to the public if you'd like. There's only, there's only three people in here, in the public. So it's up to you.
Well, I don't want to do that yet, because I want to listen to the commissioners first.
Okay, just let me know.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield. Just one thing I want to note, Mr. Zimmerman, I think indicated that he might have had one other person who wanted to speak. I just want to make sure that you noted that before we moved on.
Mr. Zimmerman, did you have somebody else?
So my architect Shane Burley is the one that is driving the visuals you are looking at. And he has a lot of additional detail he can share with you. I imagine some of it is going to be related to the questions, issues that were previously identified by the department heads and so forth. I know one of the key issues just will be traffic flow for the four different entities, which we'd like to walk you through when it's appropriate.
Mr. Burley, are you there?
Yes, Shane Burley.
Okay. Name and address, please, sir. Shane Burley.
520 Leroy Street, Ferndale, Michigan, 48220.
Okay. You're a little hard to hear, so, you know, speak up just a little bit for us.
How's this?
That's much better. Thank you.
All right. So thank you for your time. I hope everybody can see my screen and my cursor. I'm going to kind of walk through the visuals and be able to take and share additional information as needed, so. I'd just like to start with a brief overview context, you know, for those in the audience as well as the planning commission. Here is North Avenue and 59. Mr. Zimmerman currently owns and operates the Maddox Toyota over here on the west side. We have the existing Dairy Queen development. There is a new strip center under construction in this green space between the Dairy Queen and Toyota. And then we have the State Farm agent right there on the corner of Avenue and M59. The parcels that we are speaking about are primarily this area here, up to Urban Street, back down to the northern boundary of State Farm. And then we grab the front edge here between Dairy Queen and State Farm. As part of that property, there's also a small little parcel right here in M59 that is undeveloped, but part of that project. I'd like to just share, you know, the site renderings. And we go through a series of images to kind of give you some better visuals to understand. Pardon? Here we have westbound M59. We are proposing a new curb cut. This area here is our car wash site development. And I'm going to walk you through some traffic flows of how that's going to work in a little bit later. Again, we have a future detailing center, a restaurant with associated parking, car storage inventory for Maddox Toyota, and then open space slash detention pond for stormwater management. This view is kind of looking east. We want to talk about the existing residential back here and how this development impacts them and ways to mitigate, you know, this proposal or offer screening. And Sedona Tap House is an existing restaurant, like Carl mentioned, multiple locations. This is just kind of depicting, you know, where that would sit. We do anticipate potentially having a second-story rooftop patio for diners to partake the outdoor. This is our main drive here off of North Avenue. And part of the reason we chose to place in this location is we really want to tie it into the Toyota store. We want to be able to pull in traffic off of North Avenue and get them to Toyota without having to do, you know, a couple of turnarounds there on M59 and really, you know, open up traffic congestion to relieve that. As you pull further back again, you'll see the signage to the Toyota store in the back. We're kind of looking at our detail center here. This curb, this drive leads out to M59. This view is the entry from M59 to the car wash. We have vacuum stations, pay station canopy for the entry. Looking at the exit of the car wash, the exit does face M59. This is kind of a side view of that building and how, you know, the vacuum stations work. So I did have a chance to read through all the department letters and I want to kind of hopefully clear up some confusion as to how this traffic flow works. Just want to make sure that everybody's kind of understanding, you know, the way a car wash needs to operate and, you know, the multiple turning maneuvers. Left-hand turns are necessary. They help guide the customer into, you know, obviously the conveyor belt and the tracks inside the tunnel. So this site was really developed with vehicle movements in mind and trying to, you know, stage appropriately the various aspects and areas of interaction with the car wash. As you exit M59 or turn off on M59, you've got a long shared access here. Customers will be sent to the back end of the site. We do have some signage here to let them know that we have three pay stations available. These are automatic pay stations. You take a credit card, you type in the services that you're looking for. The gate opens and then you start lining up for the tunnel. Some of the questions and concerns I noted had to do with vehicle stacking. We do have 16 spaces at the back of the site that are unimpeded by any traffic. We also have the long continuous access drive. So I want to stress again that there should be very, very minimal, if none, any backup in the M59. We directed all that traffic to the rear of the site. After you pay, you'll line up. We do have a single tunnel automatic car wash. You will proceed through multiple stages of cleaning, drying equipment. I would like to also add that Maddox Auto Wash, you know, we are environmentally friendly. We do recycle all of our water. We store it in underground tanks. We filter out the contaminants. We run it through a reverse osmosis system. And then we reuse it for rinsing and washing of vehicles. Main tunnel, we do have, you know, a utility equipment space for all the equipment that operates that wash. And then we have some customer convenience bathrooms, name machines, and whatnot over here. To wash first, as we hit the tunnel, we'll be making another left-hand turn. And then this is a choice for the consumer. If you're going to skip the vacuums, you can head straight and right and head back on the Hall Road. Or if you are going to take advantage of the ample free vacuums, we take a left here, then we have, you know, 30-degree parking stalls with these overhead vacuum equipment. And you can proceed to take care of your car, vacuum it out, clean up, get rid of your trash, maybe hop inside, grab a beverage. Those little hanging trees will make your car smell nice, or whatever else you may need. And then as you exit, you have the opportunity to go back right down to Hall Road, or you can make a left and head out to North Avenue. So these turning movements are kind of set up to minimize the cross-traffic interaction between incoming and outgoing. So I just want to make sure that, you know, there's a rhyme and a reason why this is kind of set up the way it is. Again, we have entry from North Avenue. I like to say there is a left-hand turn lane already established here for both into and out of our development. Turning left, you will proceed to the back again and make this right into the queuing stations. Traffic for the restaurant. Again, North Avenue access is pretty straightforward. You know, this is all dedicated parking, required parking for the restaurant use. You have the opportunity to enter and exit from M59, again, bypassing the car wash here, making this left and parking. Maddox Toyota, this traffic is primarily geared to just getting people to that eastern Toyota store. Once again, you know, one of the reasons why we have this long access drive. Now I'll back up just a little bit. Here's the Toyota store. Again, we want to connect, offer parking, really ease the congestion of all these developments. And potentially, there's some discussions about allowing Dairy Queen, you know, doing a cross-access agreement with them, potentially allowing this strip center that's under construction to have a cross-access agreement. So really, you know, if we can get people moving throughout the site, that'll be much more beneficial, I think, and, you know, we're kind of symbiotic. These developments and the uses are complementary to each other. Future detailing center, in, out, one-way, kind of the same development, either north or M59. And this kind of just overlays all the traffic patterns on top of each other. It may look like this area right here is a bit congested. However, I will say primarily people are either turning left or turning right. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the neighborhood impact. Part of, obviously, you know, this is a wooded development. Right now, you can kind of see the Google Earth map underlaid on this drawing. We do understand that, you know, these residents, that mini forest, I'm going to call it, will be developed. However, we've tried to, you know, give back a little bit more than what is maybe necessary in terms of giving them their green space. Our thought is that we would actually offer up 15 feet of land here. I mean, this is our northern property line. This line right here is the line of our wall. So we would, you know, propose landscaping this, break it up with deciduous and both evergreen. There was an opportunity, there's a great opportunity to kind of get interesting or, you know, un-monotonize, like break up this long required screen wall. Per ordinance, it's supposed to be a six-foot-high masonry wall the entire length. Part of what we're hopefully going to discuss is, you know, is there an opportunity to look more beautiful by offering shorter lengths and then intermixing that with decorative aluminum fencing? Not chain link, but, you know, like a nice black aluminum fence and then interspersed with the greenery. I think this, from a design and from the resident standpoint, would tend to look a little nicer than just a masonry screen wall the entire length. Carl, if you want to talk a little bit about, you know, the storage for your Toyota vehicles and the use of this drive for service?
Yes, so this area, while it's helpful to us, we're obviously operating without its use. We don't currently have a need for it. We've been able to grow successfully in the past few years without it. But in trying to figure out a way to make use of this unique set of parcels, storing storing vehicles is the most logical thing to do with it. It is something that doesn't yield us any additional revenue. There is, it is purely a cost. That said, as much as it will cost us to develop, to purchase it and to develop it, our goal, of course, would be to maximize, you know, whatever utilization we can get out of it, which of course is just for storing inventory. So obviously we need to, we want to keep it safe, protected. We want to be able to access it easily. We want to be able to make sure that we don't have any things or damage and that there's enough space utilization. And then again, that we can make use of as much of it as we can. That said, as Shane pointed out, in order to be good neighbors and to solicit the support of everybody, all of our neighbors, offered up, as Shane said, that 15 feet or whatever that full length is. And the landscaping is often up the wall and perhaps absorb a little bit of noise. And so we're hopeful that this is something that everybody would think is appropriate and beneficial. If there was anything else Shane, you were thinking of?
I believe that's really it. I mean, I'm available to answer questions, to zoom in on anywhere. If you want to, you know, see a little bit more detail again, how the car wash works or anything else, just let me know.
Well, thank you, Mr. Burley. Questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have two quick questions.
Go ahead.
Member Shudo, I'd like to know the number of matching cars that they could park on the site? And what would be the phase of development? Would you develop the car wash first and use that property as parking? Or would you do the restaurant? Would you do the details chap? I know it's probably put on hold right now, but I'd like to know your plans of development. Would you start with the storage of cars and would you put the car wash in? Mr. Zimmerman, could you answer that please?
Yes, sir. So the car wash is the one revenue generating opportunity for us to get to seek a payback on this investment. So that is our priority for sure. The development of the site, including, you know, storm, water management, curbing, et cetera. Tough to do that in phases. There are some initial, you know, savings on outlays, but ultimately that we'd have to pay for it. It might, it's probably more expensive to do it in phases. So in all likelihood, we would have to develop the entire site's infrastructure. If I could have figured out a way to avoid that with the civil engineers and the builder to help us manage those costs so that we don't necessarily have to build out that vehicle storage as part of a phase one deal, that would be my goal, quite frankly. Because as I said, while we have grown our business tremendously, Toyota, in fact, just quick numbers in the north central region for Toyota, there's 100 and there were 119 Toyota dealerships when we first bought the old McInerney Toyota, which was on grass at Clinton Township. That operation was ranked 117 out of 119. So there's now 123 Toyota stores in the region and we have climbed up to number 65. In March, just before they shut us down because of the pandemic, we had climbed our way from number 26 in the state to number one. And we finished March number one in the state. So we're growing. That said, right now, we don't have a need for an extra 157 vehicles. That's one of your questions, what this configuration would be able to store. So car wash would certainly be first. If we can avoid doing the vehicle storage app in phase one, we would, we would hold off and do that in a second phase. Not sure that we could do that. The restaurant, as I mentioned earlier, we had before the pandemic, the owner of Sedona, I had spoken with him and he was interested in having, in getting going with us as we develop this project. Given the pandemic and the uncertainties that are related to that, he's still interested, but he is not able to commit. And he's asked if, we did a phase two, if we could just include him at that point. So I'm sorry to have, not have a definitive answer for you. Part of this is iterative decision-making based on what you all come up with as well. And ultimately then will we come back, what the costs come back as we put it out for bid and get the engineering done and all the rest.
I'd like to point out that, you know, that's part of the reason why we are, we chose to proceed with the PUD. We want to, you know, project in term, you know, this is a plan that we can get feedback on. But by no means does this all have to be built all at once. But speaking with the previous plan, we had arrived at this would be the best way to approach this type of development within the constraints and ordinances of the township.
Thank you. This is Member Shudo. I'll wrap up my comments right now. One comment I have, I'd like to see the 100% brick wall. And the other comment I have, I'd like to see joint access between all the participants from Hall Road to North Avenue. That's all I have to say. Say thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Bentley. I have some questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
This will be for Shane Burke early. Prior to the completion of the storage lot, will there be any security for that area? So if in fact it has to be developed to a certain degree for the infrastructure, whether it's cleared, whether the site is cleared of trees or whether they'll stay, will there be an access there that will be closed off from your op, your current operation and from North Avenue? Or will anybody be able to travel down that, that northern passageway?
Well, that's a good question. And our first and foremost, I mean, if this were to become the storage lot, we would have that scared, there would be fencing around there. We would do, you know, camera system. We do lighting with the appropriate motion sensors and dimmable controls on that. This northeastern entry to Matic would be gated as well as there would be a gate kind of right over left of the detail center.
Thank you. If there's gates there at the ends, both on the east and the west, will, will that be accessible to emergency vehicles if needed? Whether off of North Avenue or off of Hall Road?
Yes, they will be. We have this type of arrangements at other dealership projects throughout Detroit. And we do provide, you know, knockboxes and keys and whatnot required by the fire department so that they can gain access. I would like to say that, you know, typically those gates would be closed when the Toyota store is closed or open for after-hours delivery, maybe once or twice a week when we're bringing new vehicle inventory in. But when the dealership is open, those would be open.
Thank you. And if it is not developed, the parking area developed right away, will that area be closed off so we don't get activities, unwanted activities, I guess, behind, behind this market that's going in currently? And, and the restaurant? I know you'll have a retention basin there, but what will that property look like? Will the trees still be there? Will there, will it be rough graded? What are we thinking? And how can we preclude it being an area that will be problematic?
I think first and foremost, I mean, it's really an exercise of working with the township engineers and our civil engineers to determine, you know, if we're going to put in a detention system, you know, we want it to be sized for the entire property. So making sure that we can get stormwater to that pond. You know, I could see a little bit of development, getting utilities into these spaces. But at the same time, I mean, depending on how those contractors can navigate that site, I could also see leaving a lot of those trees alone and untouched at that point.
Will, will the area be closed off as it would have been if the parking were complete? Or will that remain open?
Well, I assume that the new developer for the strip mall is going to have a boundary of some sort himself between what is now trees. So we would not negatively impact that, of course. So whatever boundaries do exist are mandated now by the current developers and the current occupant of the Dairy Queen. Those would, we wouldn't do anything to negatively impact that. So and if I had my druthers, you know, back to Shane's point, if we could develop the infrastructure for the water management without having to incur the additional expenses of development for an unneeded storage lot at this point, I would prefer to leave the trees up and perhaps, you know, we stub in some access for drainage when we do the development of the lot itself. But probably wouldn't want to get too far out in front of ourselves in terms of developing it and then leaving some eyesore or something that we have to be concerned about security or continued maintenance until again, we're ready to fully develop it.
Correct. That's some of my concern. So that northern drive would, is that would be, would that be required by fire department or, or other departments to complete your car wash? And, and, you know, the initial developments? Would that northern drive be required?
Well, you know, we obviously don't have it now, so I wouldn't, I can't describe it as required. It is certainly of great benefit to us. And if we could figure out a way, if I could have my cake and eat it too, I would love to have that, that driveline in place, leave the rest of it undeveloped, prep it, you know, cost effectively for when we need the storage and then, you know, complete the development when we have sufficient growth to warrant it. So that's, again, that's having my cake and eat it too. Until we've gone through the engineering and make sure that you all are, township engineers are satisfied. Not sure if that's quite what we could do. So I could envision a scenario or trade-off where we don't have that north access until we fully develop it. Again, I, that's, it really helps to earn back some of our investment in this development by giving the Toyota store that access to North Avenue. So I'd love to see if we could figure out a way to, again, cost effectively, put that in place, preserve the rest of the development for another time when it's more warranted and proceed accordingly without, again, having to develop stuff that we don't really need yet.
Understand. I had one other question and that is related to a comment, I think, by one of the departments related to the future restaurant and the location of this northern drive. And the fact that it might, I'm not sure how busy that's going to be in the future, but having to cross from the parking lot to the restaurant, that could, I'm sorry, that could become a very active street, basically. What are your thoughts?
Thinking, we could easily put a stop sign there. We could use speed bumps as well. I mean, of course, our goal is for it to be busy, to be, for all these entities to be successful. But of course, we're not going to have much success if people don't feel safe and are concerned about that. So I think multiple strategies there again, stop signs, speed bumps, I think are helpful. And we've done that at our Redford location as well with the speed bumps. We had a, and once folks kind of know they're there, everybody's just conducts themselves a little bit differently.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. We have questions from any other commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Tuckfield had a few questions, comments if I could speak.
Absolutely, Mr. Tuckfield. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. So first I would just say, generally speaking, it's always interesting juggling these different stages of the PUDs. We haven't done a lot of them, but keeping straight the conceptual phase from the initial phase to the more initial phase, the advanced phase is always interesting and trying to keep track which questions are appropriate when has always been, well, interesting. That being said, I have some. Hopefully they are pertinent for this stage, but certainly up to the planning department, Mr. Skirto, to haul me in. I want to make sure I stay within, within what we're looking to do tonight. So first I would just say on a general basis, conceptually, with these PUDs, I was always taught that a PUD was the township gives something in return for something and the, and the developer gives something and gets something in return. In this case, I think we're looking at loosening some of our ordinances in order to hopefully develop a difficult spot and obviously get tax revenue for one thing, but also more businesses and more options for our residents. And Mr. Zimmerman, as you mentioned, I believe on the other side, you get some, some access, some future growth opportunities and maybe another piece of your business that's got synergy and, and a restaurant, which I'm sure all those things work good together. So I think the general idea, I like the concept. I think it makes sense. It's a difficult parcel and particularly a kind of an entry point to the township. It, it sort of ties the, or it starts to tie the eastern end to the western end of our township. You know, if you drive down Hall Road from the Hayes area, it's considerably different. Different as you cross Card and come to North Avenue. And not that I necessarily want to see a field of blacktop on either side of the road. There's definitely different feelings and this kind of ties that corridor more together going from the, from the 94 area down to the M 15, to the Vandec Expressway, I should say. So generally speaking, I think the con, the concept makes sense and I like it. So that'll be, that'll be the overall thought that I have. I do have some questions here and some comments. Some general comments I'd have is that I would, I would concur with some of the comments by the department heads. I appreciate the, appreciate Shane, you referencing the, the traffic flow for the car wash. There's another car wash not terribly far away from this location. I don't know how familiar you guys are with it, but it's probably one of the busier ones in the area. It's near Hall Road and Romeo Plank. And if you go and you look at that car wash on a Sunday afternoon, I think it explains why there's some concern for stacking. I don't know the number of stacking there, but I can tell you that they have three lanes that are somewhere in the general vicinity of the length going toward the back end of the property. And it's, it's pretty common on a sunny Sunday in the summer for those lanes to be backed up all the way to Hall Road. So I would just caution you that that'd be something I would be concerned about. And while, while the stacking and the flow was explained, I would say that it's something I'm still concerned about and hopefully at a later stage, you might be able to address that more. I don't know, for example, I don't know how many of the vacuum cleaners you expect to be used simultaneously. If there's some ability to move those around or, or other things of that nature. But I perceive that just based on my, my depth perception of the property and other nearby car washes and the use that I see them get, I'm concerned about the stacking that's, that's there going north to sour, south-north, I suppose, on that, on that access road to the pay booth. So that concerns me, something I'd like to hopefully see in, in future plans addressed. Other things of that area was I felt that there may be either a lack of, of parking planned or a lack of site pedestrian movement for the detailing station in the car wash. Maybe this partially speaks to Mr. Zimmerman's comment. He thinks the detailing station may not happen right away. But I just, when I'm looking at this, I believe there's three parking spots currently located at the northwest corner of the car wash, the right, right there where you're waving. I don't know the load of employees you expect in these businesses, but just by my count, assuming the detailing station and the car wash, I would assume that it's more than three. I assume they're coming in separate cars, at which point, you know, where are they parking? Are they in the restaurant? Are they parking in the car storage area? Are they parking in Maddox, the Toyota, the dealership itself? That's something I'd be interested in seeing addressed. I don't know if I have strong feelings on if it's too much, just I, it looked like it may not be enough for that area. The north boundary to the property lines, I appreciate the work you guys put in there, obviously. And I think you've mentioned it in your comments. Noise is probably going to be a factor. The balance, of course, is that this is Hall Road and so there is noise there and so there is that balance. But the one thing I just wanted to mention was that I was a little puzzled why, and maybe you mentioned this and I missed it, but why from the point of the sign west to the point where you meet the restaurant parking lot, why the wall tapers closer to the property line to the point where the probably one and a half of the parcels to the north on the west end of Urban Street have a significantly smaller wall density. And I believe you're showing the cursor, be from that point to the left, but behind the center access road. Yes, that, that portion right there. So I guess I, I am kind of curious if someone could look into that or at a future point, have some sort of reasoning for why that tapers down or perhaps a slightly adjusted flow site so that that buffer would stay constant. Just kind of moving around the drawing here. The restaurant I thought was interesting. I do notice you guys, you mentioned the sound buffering for the upper outdoor seating area. Particularly with it being up higher, I would be interested in knowing you know, at future points where seating was going to be, what restrictions you're going to have to keep sound from traveling? If there was going to be time restrictions on when there was open, you know, are you planning on broadcasting sound out there? All those types of questions. Not pertinent now, but that's something I'm hoping we see more of in the future. A general comment on the road. I know Mr. Bentley touched on this. I think Mr. Shudo did as well. But there's another development in the township that is a similar flow to this where there is a, there's a dealership and it actually fronts on Hall Road. And then there's an access road that runs behind several businesses. One of them's a car wash, ironically enough. There's a fast food establishment and actually there's two. And that back road does not get used often. And in my experience, part of the issue is that it's quite often blocked. There's a gate similar to what you guys are describing here going into the dealership. So I guess I would just, I would, I would want to, to, in the future, you'd mentioned it today about the hours for the gates. But I would like some detail on how you plan on using the gates because I, I know that the, the free flowing of the road is helpful for your business, but I also want to understand and make sure that it makes sense for all of those establishments. I've seen that end up being a choke point. I think that's almost everything. Oh, signage. Mr. Zimmerman, you, you mentioned that one of the benefits for you guys was the additional access point on North Avenue and eyes on there. I was just curious for the future. Hopefully we would be keeping signage on North Avenue within or close to established sign ordinances. Obviously, if you're looking at, at guiding people in, I would hope that it's, it's abiding by things. I know you mentioned the ZBA and the sign on the front of Maddox, which I was, I was happy to be part of. I think you guys did a good job with it. Did a good job of balancing need with size, but I'm hoping that we can keep these signs mostly with the ordinance. Okay, one more thing. Almost done. Trying to get through this so I can keep moving. Oh, last thing, and this was off of Mr. Van Tiflin's notes, and this echoes something that Mr. Bentley brought up. And that is that I would concur that I had some concerns with the traffic flow from the north parking lot on parcel A to the south parking lot or south parcel as they are existing right now with the restaurant. Obviously there is the opportunity for stop signs and speed bumps. But it does seem like it's a little bit awkward having 60% of the parking across what is meant to be a main access point for the access point for the, for the development. So those are all of my various comments and observations. They may come across as a little bit negative. I hope they don't. I would say and circle back to the beginning. Generally, I think this is a a good concept, a good, a good idea. And I, I find myself in general support of it, which actually leads me to the last thing. And Mr. Shudo touched on this as well. Although I don't think he went as far as I'd like to mention it now. And that is one of the things that we have seen in the past with PUDs is that PUDs come forward. They have a lot of good portions of them. And we, we get the whole picture and the whole picture is pretty and rosy. And then one portion of it gets built and the rest doesn't. Now, obviously there's financial aspects of it. We're in the middle of a pandemic, as I think we're all aware. So I recognize that there's some variations to it. But I know that I am, and I know that other people are a little bit cautious about that because we've, we've felt, we have felt burned before when we approved what we thought was going to be a complex and we ended up seeing a very small portion of it because of other things. So I would say that just as a general thing, I think there's, there is a concern with that. I hope you're cognizant to it. We also recognize that there's business concerns. But just recognize that I know for me and I think for others, that is a concern that some of it will be built, but some of it will stay for long periods of time because it's not ready for it. So that'll be everything I have. Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the time.
Mr. Tuckfield, are there any other commissioners that would like to speak?
Yes, Commissioner Oliver wants to ask one question to Mr. Zimmerman. Was there any reason that the restaurant wouldn't have taken advantage of all the traffic on Hall Road? And the car wash spun up to North Avenue and a restaurant placed on Hall Road? Can you answer that question?
Yes. So we've talked about it a couple of different ways and obviously lots of trade offs between the community's interests, restaurateurs' interest and ours. So some of it, some of my answer, I suppose, I could end up folding into responses to Mr. Tuckfield's questions and comments relative to stacking and the depth and that, you know, that jog and the wall in the back. So if I were to just address that for a second and not having the dimensions in front of me right now, but the way it fits in order to have the best experience for our customers. And by the way, part of that experience is to not have them sitting out on Hall Road. We have no intention of having them stack out like that. So part of the reason that we, the wall jogs like it does is we wanted to maximize the depth and thus the length of that common access and the ability to stack vehicles heading north and likewise to have adequate turning radius so that the cars can line up as they merge from those three pay stations. And to have a length of the car wash itself and the building that houses it to be able to provide the best quality car wash. Interestingly, the, there's a relationship between the length of the conveyor and the speed of the tunnel. They are, they grow in unison. So the longer we make it, the faster the throughput and thus the, the less amount of stacking waiting to get in there. So that, that depth was a big part of the reason it's, it's configured the way it is with the restaurant on North Avenue. For the, and I could list a few other things, but I'll just hit a couple of highlights here. From the restaurant's perspective, they want to have their cake and eat it too. So one of the things, of course, is to maximize its access to prospective customers and visibility and again, access to both Hall Road and North Avenue. But interestingly, they, the experience of the customer being too close to the busier road, Hall Road, is something that they were a little bit concerned with, especially since their, their business model. And they have one of these freestanding restaurants in Troy on Big Beaver. And this is a franchise that comes from out of state, but this second tier for rooftop dining is part of their, their brand. And so that experience for the customers, they wanted to have it open air and upstairs, but at the same time not have all the, as much noise as there might be with, where right out on Hall Road. So and then there's the relative value frankly, of the real estate that's fronts Hall Road with two to three times more traffic versus the the cost of, or the value, I should say, of real estate that fronts a road with a third or, you know, half of what the other has. So those are some of the things that went into this and we, I don't know Shane, how many versions you went through this, how many permutations, but there were a lot of reconfigurations and trying to shore everything in here and meet all the parking requirements. So that's, believe it or not, this is the short answer to your question.
Okay. I got one other quick question and getting back to the statement, the statement that Mr. Tuckfield made about this happens to us in the township where we get this nice plan and then only a few things get built. In the event that your restaurant person, company can't come through because of financial reasons, are you willing to go with another restaurant or is it only going to be this restaurant company?
We absolutely consider somebody else. This is somebody I've known for 40 years. And has had success and, you know, the restaurant business is of course very difficult and they've turned over and I'm happy to report that they have navigated through the pandemic. Well, their other restaurant is at 12 Oaks Mall. So the mall there is shut down. And yet they have been able to manage their business in such a way that while there's uncertainty that keeps them from being able to commit. At this moment, they still have a great optimism and a great interest in this location. In fact, the minority partner in this venture, who is the real restaurateur individual, he lives close. And so he is really excited about this location. So if it was a matter of waiting a little bit longer, whether that was a year, 18 months, what have you for these folks, I might be inclined to do that just because it's always nice to have nice neighbors, people we know, people we trust, people have a track record of success. So, but you know, if they were unable to commit and so forth, absolutely. We would entertain somebody else. And you know, by the way, just while I'm thinking of it real quick, with regard to the access from parcel A and the parking there across the north driveline to the restaurant. Just as I mentioned, 12 Oaks Mall, this is fairly typical, that configuration where you have parking at the mall out closer to the road. And then there's, you know, people walk from the parking lot, cross the driveline to enter the mall. So this I would, you know, say is comparable. But I, I share, again, I share that we all share the concern and we want to make sure that that is safe. And all the rest, we would do everything we can to make sure that there's nobody going to put anybody at risk.
Thank you. No other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Josh, are you there?
Yes.
The new development, the Castle Rock retail and development where the cars are going to be parked, will there be a cement wall between the parking and new development? Retail Castle Rock retail or that wall go away now that they're commercial going in behind it?
I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but Jim is actually looking into it as we speak.
Okay, I was just looking at, and I was just wondering what kind of wall we would require to go between the two? Would it be the cement six foot wall? Or would we waive it because of the the two commercial properties? There would have to be some kind of wall there between a fence wall or whatever, but I just was wondering what your thoughts were on that. But if Jim's looking at it, that's fine. Thank you.
Looking it up. Jim is, is looking it up, but I, I think the, the consensus here in the room with us is that there probably is not a wall there.
Okay, thank you.
Interesting. That's just open into the woods is the current plan?
I believe so.
Interesting.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open it to the public. Ryan, are we able to do that?
Yeah, we can do that. So if any of you in the public wish to speak, you can press star nine on your phone and then it will raise your hand digitally and then we can call on you one by one. So feel free to do that now if you'd like.
As the public comes forward, I just want to remind everyone that there is a four minute time limit. Anyone?
Doesn't look like it. We got, like I said, we have three people in attendance here, so.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion for the board?
Mr. Chairman, what's the, and this would be maybe to, to Mr. Box or Mr. Skurdo, what's the appropriate motion on, on a preliminary PUD? Are we, are we receiving it? Are we accepting the preliminary? What's the, what's the appropriate motion here?
I think the motion is you're accepting the concept plan and you're directing the applicants go back, consider the notes and submit for the next phase.
So it would be, if we were accepting the concept, would it be just appropriate to say, accept the concept and prepare the next phase of drawings for the process?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Well, that being the case, unless there's anybody else who had anything, any other questions on it, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the preliminary PUD development concept plan. And ask the petitioner to bring back updated plans for the next phase.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Seconded by Oliver.
Seconded by Charlie Oliver. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Before I do that, can I, can I add a caveat to that? That the, the approval of further development, consider the comments made by our planning department, our engineering department and those made at this meeting.
Mr. Bentley, I'd be glad to include that as part of the motion. I will say I think that's specifically spelled out in it, but I, I would be happy to include it.
Mr. Oliver, are you still willing to second?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will. Chairman Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Shudo? Commissioner Shudo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tuckfield?
Yes.
And Secretary Bentley? Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Good job. Item number seven, old business, extension of time, special land use, Sunny's Pool and, and more. Can you all still hear me? I got something that came up on my computer. Everybody hear me okay? Hello?
I can.
Yep.
Yes.
Permanent parcel 0818326002 located on the west side of Industrial Drive, approximately 443 feet north of 23 Mile Road, section 18, Kevin Zacharice, Zachar, Zacharisky petitioner. Mr. Mr. Skurdo, are you here tonight, Mr. Skurdo?
I am here.
Okay, you know, I'm, I'm having a problem distinguishing between who's talking and who's not. So if you all could just say your name first before you comment, that would be a big help. But Mr. Box, we'll start with you.
Yes. So you guys have, have had Sunny's Pools in front of you before. It's a retail pool supply store located near 23 Mile on Industrial Drive. Some of the items you looked at previously and some of the things that were still hanging out there were the installation of a fire separation wall and looking at some barrier free parking spaces as well as a gate in the rear yard. They were granted an extension to to come up with some of these changes for the April 7th planning commission meeting, which as we all know, did not take place. So they are here with us tonight.
Okay. Is the petitioner in the audience? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, we did build, we filled in the wall for the fire
No, we did build, we filled in the wall for the firewall and we have got the parking lot all properly striped and we have the gate unlocked during our daytime hours from what we were told to do. So I believe I accomplished pretty much the most important stuff on your list.
Okay, but you are still now asking for an extension of time, is that correct?
That is what you asked of me before all this COVID-19 situation occurred. So I believe I've met your requirements to see if we are approved for our petition.
Okay. One of the things Mr. Bentley talked about was, I believe it was Mr. Bentley or Mr. Tuckfield last time we met, which was in March, I believe, was the fire inspector going out and looking at your, your, your business. Is Ken the fire inspector here?
Yes, I'm here.
Has he, has Mr. Mr. Zak Ryansky met everything that you had mentioned before?
So Ryan Germin, he is another one of our inspectors here. He has been dealing with that whole project. Excuse me. In speaking with him today, his biggest issue or concern he still had was that, I believe it was a three-hour wall separation.
Okay.
I did talk to Joe Maples, the building official today. Apparently, his understanding is the wall was built, but the fire department has not been out to that location since the wall has been built and with the pandemic that was going on, basically all of our inspections were put right to a halt.
Okay.
So, but again, in speaking with Ryan this morning, his only issue really now is that three-hour wall separation being built.
Okay. Kevin, if you don't mind, I'll just call you Kevin. Is that three-hour wall put in place?
I believe the architect asked for a one-hour wall. There are, because it is a cement wall, so we built according to the architect. Now, again, Mr. Germin was here visiting due to us fixing an alarm pad a couple days ago and he didn't enter the building, but he did just stop by because of the alarm going off. And again, like you said, we haven't had, been able to have anybody inspect what we're doing. But if I look at the notes from previous time, it was only asking for a one-hour firewall because we just took out some glass doors and put it in according to building codes. So the wall itself has been enclosed properly and volume of chemical that was here originally has been shipped out to other of my locations.
Okay. Right now, I'm going to open it up to the commissioners. But maybe before I do that, Mr. Box, do you have a comment on any of this or Mr. Skirdo?
Yeah, we're kind of, for the firewall, we are leaning on the fire department and building department. We understood, I thought our notes said a three-hour wall, but again, we're leaning on the fire department. We did visit, Mr. Box and I did visit the store today. The floor plan has been changed.
Okay.
The walls are, there's no structural conditions or floor changes to walls or structural members, but they did move the chemicals that were in the rear, they moved those up into the office location on the front of the building and then they moved all the showroom activity and things like umbrellas and equipment and patio furniture to the center part of the building with a small warehouse operation in the rear. So that was a departure from when the last time we visited and wrote a review.
Mr. Skirdo, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I know, that's just an update of what Mr. Box and I saw today. Like I say, we, we are, in terms of the technical aspects of the firewall, we are leaning on the fire department and the building departments to guide us.
This is Ken Bartsch again, if I may. In front of me, I, I, again, I talked to Ryan Germin today. He was telling me a three-hour separation, but now I'm hearing a one-hour separation. I'm going to tell you without looking in my reference books, I would have to say a three-hour may be required, but again, I'm not looking in my books because I'm assuming the separation is based on a high hazard use in the back portion of that facility. And I'm not sure if he's using the front portion as a mercantile or exactly what that use is, but just again, without having any reference books in front of me right now, a one-hour separation between a high hazard and again, if it's a mercantile use or something seems a little light to me. But again, I do not have my reference books in front of me to, anything to back me up at this time.
Okay, right now, I'd like to open it up to the commissioners and then we'll go from there. Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Commissioners?
Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Mr. Tuckfield?
I noticed that, or at least he was, yes, he still is, Mr. Maples, our building official is still on the line. Is it, Joe, is it possible that you can speak on this at all?
I'm sure I can. I haven't been out to the site. I wasn't aware until just recently that there weren't any changes made to the floor plan number one and to any rated wall assemblies. Kevin had said that he was following the direction of an architect, I believe. No one did consult us. No one pulled any permits for doing any modifications to a rated wall, which would be required. Replacing doors, obviously, some that may have had glass to doors that are, have a higher fire rating is acceptable, but typically, the doors match the rating of the walls that are there. So I would need at least a new floor plan identifying the use of each area and the rating of the walls that are being used, because in the front area, you have multiple rooms. You've got an office. It looks like you may have a couple of bathrooms, a kitchen, a conference room, an open office area. Where do we delineate the rated wall from the non-rated wall? And that will depend on the amount of chemicals and the types of chemicals that would be used. He may only need a one-hour, but there is, if there's, if it is considered a high hazard, the three-hour may be possible too. But we should get all that information along with all of the MSDS reports on the chemicals from the applicant or his architect or engineer.
Thank you. To Mr. Box, you mentioned that you and Mr. Skirdo were out there earlier this week and you did see that some changes had been made inside, even if they're apparently not permitted or inspected yet?
Yes, we were out there this morning. The, I mean, looking at the things that were noted from the last time these guys were before you, they do have new, they also have, they have the gate open for the rear parking area. As far as changes on the inside, I had not been inside before, so I'm, you know, I'm going on the word of Dave who was there with me that, that they have in fact changed.
But, but Mr. Skirdo, you felt that they have done something in there at any rate. It's regardless of whether it has been, again, permitted or not, it appeared that they've done some, some motion, positive motion toward the fire separation wall, whether it's rated correctly or not, whether it's inspected or not?
Um, because the chemicals that they have on site now, they moved out to the front where originally was the office, the retail center and a small storage area. So all chemicals are stored on the opposite side of a concrete block wall than where the furniture and equipment and where the salespeople greet the patrons. So they, you know, things that swap, it's the fire department and building are good with it, we're good with it since it is covered and people do enter the center of the building now as opposed to the front of the building and are isolated from those chemicals.
All right. Those are all the questions I had for the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else?
I guess, this is Commissioner Bentley. My comments again were related to the firewall separation or fire separation wall and that was a requirement based upon the, the quantity of, of the chemicals and the type of chemicals they are. If that has changed as was identified, that a lot of it has been shipped out, I'm not sure what the quantity is anymore and if that in the front of the store, again, that would be up to the building department and the fire marshal and your future plans of how much you intend to keep stored. But as I recall, it was for a three-hour separation wall in the original amount and that, that was the amount that I think the last time we met or one of the, maybe the first time this was brought forward, that's the amount that was needed for the, for the store. And the current existing masonry wall, as I recall, did not have any rated doors. I think there were three penetrations through it and one opening and none were identified in the schedule to be, to be rated. Again, this is a, a building department and fire department issue if, if in fact, they are still storing amounts of that chemical that would require the fire separation of
All right, thank you, Mr. Bentley. One of the things I heard when Mr. Bentley was talking was the word if. I don't think the fire department knows. I don't think the building department knows yet and no fault of your own, I mean, with the pandemic and everything, it's, everything was on hold and I'm not sure Kevin knows. Do we want to extend time enough for our fire department to get in there and look at it, for our building department and Joe Maples to get in there and make sure that everything is as it should be? Mr. Box? Mr. Skirdo?
If that's, if that's your decision, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm good with letting the department and fire department. This is Mr. Skirdo.
All right, I'm just thinking, what would be a good timeframe to give our, our petitioner a little bit of extra time so our folks can go in and look at the situation over and be confident that they're compliant with everything that's going on? Would a month work? Would two weeks work? I'm asking your advice.
This is Kevin Zakarski again from Sunny's. If I may speak for a moment about the conversations being going on. The, this epidemic situation that we're all in has caused great mess across the board as we know. We have altered our entry and exit to meet the needs of the health department and the state and the world. We really haven't modified the building at all from what we've done before, except move some of our chemicals to the front area that is kept away from the customers, except for one or two customers at any given time in the building. So we have safe distancing for both customers and employees. So with the large area that was a display area, we have been able to keep the customers in a more comfortable setting, in a safer setting, away from each other and chemicals. We have definitely reduced our inventory, according to Mr. Germin, as we shipped it to other locations out of this building for storage purposes. There are doors in this building on the cement wall that Mr. Germin has seen that are properly rated for three hours. So I may have, I may have misspoke earlier about this one-hour firewall or three-hour firewall as that we are in this pandemic, the pool business is a lot like the toilet paper industry. We are in a world of hurt of having supplies. So quite frankly, we're running around here crazy taking care of our customers and taking care of all the rules and regulations for our safety. But the wall itself was built according to the architect's drawings and unfortunately, during all this craziness, I did submit online plans to the building department because at the time, that was the appropriate thing to do when everything was closed down.
Excuse me, Kevin. Kevin, excuse me, one second. We never allowed online permits for plans. The only, the only-
You are correct. You are correct that I did receive note afterwards that until the building department would be open, could we supply those plans accordingly by dropping off in a drop box. Unfortunately, I have not done that as I was waiting for our meeting here. But we have made many changes to accommodate the COVID situation and the fire department situation to protect both our clients, our employees and our neighborhood. So we are moving in the right direction and all this probably would be all behind us if we didn't have this pandemic going on. So I'd appreciate 30 days just so that I could have the proper people from a home township visit me to make sure I'm doing accordingly what they want me to do exactly. And Mr. Germin has been very generous with his time when he gets it before all this occurred and we've been trying to follow everything he keeps asking us to do. And so I said, we have, I believe if I was misspoken, a three-hour firewall in place accordingly, but until the building department comes out and inspects, once we apply for that permit for this eight-foot by eight-foot wall that had to be built, I think we're doing pretty good. So asking for 30 days, as long as the building department, which is obviously quite busy now getting back to work, can come out and visit and make sure my application for the building department, what I built, is approved. So that's, that's all I got to say.
If I could just speak to that, this is Joe Maples again. We would have to get the plans from the architect submitted with an application. We have to review it. We have to get the proper fees paid for that before we can approve anything. I don't have anything to, to look at right now, so I would be going in there blind without something. So that would be the first step, getting those documents to me, which we are open eight to 4:30 Monday through Friday for drop-offs. This week, we are available for appointments to be set up and next week, we'll be open to the public as normal. So as soon as you can get that to the building department, I'll expedite the review on it and I'm sure we can be out there within a couple of weeks and well before the 30-day next meeting, if that's what you would like.
That'd be great because again, your time itself is very busy. We fill out the forms, the application, get it over there the first of next week and, and then you can come out and inspect and make, after you approve everything and inspect it and then we can have something better for the next meeting because the firewall is an issue. And the architect, like I said, was here after- And, uh, the architect, like I said, was here after the last meeting, but then the next meeting was canceled. And, um, that I have here with all his notes on it and such that we'll print off and apply it with the building department. But again, like I said, we have reduced because of what's going on out there, we have become more of a virtual showroom now for our customers. Um, because during this time, uh, up to a certain time, we didn't allow a customer into the building. And so our business was done through visual like or talking like we are tonight, doing FaceTiming and all that with a virtual showroom because we had no customers in the building this whole time, about two weeks ago.
If I can ask one more question, who is your architect?
Uh, unfortunately, because I'm not Mr. Techno, I plugged this laptop in in front of my normal computer. So my normal computer is not working right now. The architect though is, is, uh, supplied by, um, who, uh, is from the landlord of this company. Um, and again, if I was better prepared, I could give you that answer, but my other computer won't go on with this one running. Um, I'm looking for it as we speak, but I'm not sure where I have it right now in all my pool stuff.
Um, is, am I correct? And did I hear you say that you made an eight by eight wall, three hour wall? Or did you just replace the doors?
We took out a glass door that was, I guess, rated for one hour and we built a two by six, two by six, two by eight, I thought, what does this say here? I built, um, six inch metal stud, five inch inch type X drywall, fire clocking perimeter, eight by eight wall with six inch metal studs, which is what the architect claimed to remove. The steel fire doors that are in the building, which are two other ones, are rated and tagged as three hours and Mr. Gurman has inspected those before because we were worried that those doors weren't because he couldn't find the tags one time. But another time he was here, he found it.
Okay. Well, it sounds like to me that we need some extra time. Not so much that anybody's done anything wrong. We just don't know. It's just because of the pandemic. Joe, is 30 days enough for you to get out there and get this done?
Um, I, I believe it is. Until I see the plan, um, you know, we have a lot of plans in and they don't always get approved on the first, uh, round of review. And sometimes it takes the architect several weeks to get back to us. Um, this being a small project, I would hope it is correct the first round. And if it's not for us to get a, um, speedy, uh, revised set of plans that can be approved. Um, I, I seem pretty confident, um, that we can, um, get out there. Uh, the only fear I have that part of the wall may have to be taken down so that we can see what's actually there, uh, because, um, no construction is supposed to be started unless you have a permit and approved set of plans.
Gotcha.
I took pictures of my construction because showing the studs, showing in the drywall, it hasn't been painted, just been taped, that you can see the work. And, um, if I have to, I can pull off one whole side, actually a waste of energy and time and money. But again, the six inch steel studs were built while we had time when everybody was staying at home.
Okay. And I assume they go up to the roof deck itself?
And this was an eight foot by eight foot opening, eight foot tall. So it is a cement cinder block wall that had a glass frame door in that we removed and studded it to the cement bricks accordingly to the rules of the building department that we follow from the architect.
Well, that can all be determined in the next 30 days. Ken, my fire inspector guy, are you there still? Ken?
I am, sir.
Okay. Cause 30 days enough for you to get out there and look at this too?
Uh, yeah, pretty much what will happen on our end is once, uh, Mr. Maples gets the plans and everything looks good to him and his department, uh, the fire department will be notified by the building department to go out and perform our inspections. So, um, as long as we get, uh, you know, enough, enough notice here and Mr. Maples is able to review the plans, uh, we will be able to go out there. So it's kind of in Mr. Maple's hands as far as how quickly we can get out there. And as he stated, if, you know, if the plans are not correct on the first go around, um, it's just going to delay the process. Having said that, um, if everything goes well with the first set of submittals, I don't see any issue with the fire department going out there, uh, along with building and usually to be, uh, go out the same day as the building department will.
Okay. Thank you. Uh,
Absolutely.
Any commissioners? Does anybody else have any other comments or a motion? Uh, Mr. Box, do I need to open this to the public? Mr. Box, are you still there?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
You, you do not need to open it to the, to the public at this time.
All right. Planning commissioners, do you have anything else to add or a motion?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield. I had, I had some additional questions if I could.
Absolutely.
I have up here, uh, the original motion that was made on Tuesday, February the fourth, two thousand twenty. Uh, and the motion was to approve a special land use for Sunnys Pool's contingent upon six conditions. Um, I'd like to make sure because during this conversation, um, more of this has come up as a question to me. So the first condition is that building department requirements are met, include installation of a fire separation wall. Um, I believe this condition is not met. The fire separation wall may be built, which is good, but we have no building permit and we have no verification of it. Um, the second condition is the fire department's requirements are met, includes installation of a fire separation wall. Um, pretty much ditto to the first one. We, we believe some something is done, but we have no verification. And that's what mostly we've been talking about. The third, um, condition is that the retail space does not exceed 4,000 square feet of area. Um, this is a question to me because of the use of the building having been flip flopped to the warehouse area. I don't have the drawings of the building in front of me. My memory is the office space takes up a sixth of the building or less. And so I, I would be curious to know if the building is still meeting that condition. Um, and we'll get to that in just a second. Uh, two barrier free parking spaces in the side yard are properly marked. I believe someone mentioned that that was the case, but I have not heard that confirmed that I've noted here. Uh, eight employee parking spaces remain properly marked in the rear yard with removal of the rear yard fence gate per ordinance requirement. I believe Mr. Zakarsky mentioned that the gate has been allowed to stay open. Um, but this is mentioning the removal of the rear yard fence gate. So I'm wondering if it's remaining open or if it has been removed. Um, and then the last item was a fully dimensioned floor and site plans submitted to the township. So I, I'm just curious, Mr. Box, I don't know if you can speak to this, but those last four, uh, retail space exceeding 4,000 square feet, the barrier free parking spaces, the gate and the dimensioned site plans, do you know if those, uh, conditions have been met yet?
Uh, the barrier free spaces have been met. Uh, the gate is open, has not been removed. Uh, and I'm, I'm not sure that it would be removed because there's also stuff, uh, I'm, I'm assuming they would want to close that in the evenings. Uh, as they, they have things in that, uh, fenced in area that would be, need to be locked up in the evening hours when they're not open for business. Uh, as far as the other two, is the square footage? Is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a dimension.
Yeah, we need the, we need the dimensioned site plan, I assume, dimensioned floor and site plans.
Yeah, correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, you know, my, my concern here, I recognize obviously COVID has been a significant interruption. However, we gave this approval in the beginning of February, um, uh, with a two-month timeframe. Um, it's now four months. Um, we don't have any permits pulled. The retail space has changed significantly. Uh, the rear yard gate either we need to modify the motion or it's not compliant. And I would assume we don't have a fully dimensioned floor and site plans. So it doesn't sound like Mr. Box has one. It doesn't sound like Mr. Uh, Maples has one. And if, if we did, based on what was there, we had a, I think we had a rough drawing before, but it sounds like it has changed since then. I, I guess I'm not, I'm not comfortable extending this 30 days. I, I appreciate that Mr. Zakarsky is in, is in a difficult spot as far as, as, as other conditions. But this is still at its base, the concern here is, is a hazard for, for customers who are coming. And I believe he mentioned that they moved the space around so that they could make sure that the customers are more comfortable. So I assume that if, if that's accurate, that they are still receiving customers there. And we don't really have verification of much of this. So I guess my, my feeling, if I was to make a motion right now, which I probably will in just a second, what I'm, what I'm looking at is that I'd like to see it back in two weeks and see if they've gotten the drawing in. I mean, the, the, the drawing is at its base, it was, it was supposed to be in, in March and, and it's hard for me to recognize a pause in April, or it was actually supposed to be in February, a pause in April is being a reason that the drawing didn't get in. I, I've, I've concerns this is going to go. Um, and if there's no other questions, I'd, I'd like to make a motion uh, with those regards. But that's, that's my concerns and that's what they're based upon.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has any concerns or questions at this time?
May I ask a question? This is Kevin again.
Go ahead.
What is the reason for removing of the gate in the back?
Uh, if that's to me, Mr. Zakarsky, I don't have my notes from that meeting. I believe that that particular stipulation was based off of some comments from department heads. It may be necessary to remove it. My concern is it's a specific condition of the site plan or the, the special land use approval. And, uh, I don't believe it's followed. So we either need to verify that it shouldn't be followed so it can be removed or it needs to be followed.
That is the question is, it was asked of it before, but I don't know the reason why because locking up behind a building is not unusual to protect your vehicles, equipment or whatever. And as long as it's open during the daytime, for any reasons of fire department rules or regulations, uh, you know, because of, uh, of a danger, I could understand it. But during the daytime and of course, the building's locked anyway. So that was a question I have for that. Um, I have no trouble of drawing up a new floor plan from the, again, from the architect who did the drawing that at, again, during this time was submitted with a permit online, which I found out I shouldn't have done so that we had some of this stuff done during this slow time and when we were all at home. Um, we haven't really changed the building around besides allowing people to enter differently so they would have more spacing. So, and we read, and the biggest problem we seem to have is the amount of chemicals that were here that are not here now. So our building has less chemicals in it than we did at the old store in the strip mall. So we are meeting some of those chemical guidelines. But if worse comes to worse, again, Mr. Gurman says have this much here, have that much there. And he's happy with that as long as you reduce the volume of those chemicals. And I'm willing to do that. Now, with the terms of the showroom being 4,000 square feet, the point of that matter was because of not having enough parking spots. Again, we are going through a whole new changing of the world. We don't need 19 parking spots, but we absolutely need more space for the physical product that takes up a lot of space. So when I put up an 18-foot swimming pool, that takes up a physical amount of showroom space for, just because I got to show something. So I will do new drawings for you folks to show what we are, what you asked for. But with the building department and the fire department, they're the people that just want to make sure everybody's safe.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Tuckfield, if, uh, no one else has any, uh, comments or concerns, why don't you go ahead and make your motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to extend this, uh, special land use approval to our next regularly scheduled meeting, uh, which I believe is the 30th of, actually I should check. Mr. Box, is that the 30th of, of June? Is that our next one? Or are we into, into July at this point?
The 30th of June, the 30th of June is a special meeting so we can get caught up. The next regularly scheduled one is July 7th.
Okay. Um, do we have the ability to put that on the special meeting? Can we postpone to that without any problem?
I believe so.
Well, then my, my motion would be to post, to, to extend the special land use to the June 30th special meeting, um, to allow the applicant time to make sure that he's following the process and to clarify these things.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Oliver, second the motion? Did you have something else, Mr. Oliver? Did you, were you going to say something?
Uh, no, but getting back to that, uh, gate, I think the gate, the reason why the gate was to be removed, um, you, you were short of parking spaces.
Yeah.
And, and that was the reason, the intent was the, uh, discussed about the gate. But I'll still stay with my motion, with my, uh, support.
And, and I'd also like to make the comment for my motion before we go to the vote that this motion does not in any way, um, remove any of the conditions of the original special land use approval, uh, can, uh, that were attached with it. And that was that the building department requirements are met, includes installation of a fire separation wall. The fire department requirements are met, includes installation of a fire separation wall. That the retail space does not exceed 4,000 square feet, which is Mr. Oliver mentioned, uh, was a parking issue. Uh, that two barrier free parking spots in the side yard are properly marked. That eight employee parking spots remain properly marked in the rear yard with removal of the rear yard fence gate per ordinance requirement. I would note that if there's more evidence on that brought back, we don't need it. I'd be happy to remove it for my motion at that point. And a fully dimensioned floor and site plans are submitted to the township, uh, reflecting, uh, as-built conditions.
Okay, Mr. Oliver, you still going to second it? You're good?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bentley, call the rule.
Yes, Mr. All right. Um, Secretary Bentley, yes. Uh, Chairman Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Shudo?
I think you're muted, Jasper.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Tuckfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Item number eight, public comments on non-agenda items. Ryan, do we have anybody?
Uh, we have one, we have one person here.
Okay.
Ending phone number, uh, phone number ending in four two zero three. If you, if you want to have a comment, um, you can just raise your hand digitally using star nine on your phone.
Okay. Uh, just before you speak, just please leave, give us your name and your address, please, and you have a four-minute time limit. Go ahead.
Yeah, they're not raising their hand. So give it a few, give it a few more seconds and then. Okay. I would, I would say that they do not wish to speak.
All right. Then at this time I'll close public comments and open it up to commissioner comments. Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, this is Commissioner Shudo speaking. I have a question for Jash. A lot of communities now are, uh, building, uh, restaurants and houses with, uh, storage containers. What are your thoughts on that? They just built a Taco Bell on 23 Mile and Van Dyke. What are your thoughts on the storage containers?
I guess I'm not sure what you're talking about, storage containers.
Well, the, the cargo shifts, the big containers, there was a Taco Bell built on, uh, 23 Mile World where they use these large storage containers to build buildings instead of brick and mortar. They're converting these, uh, large containers that they'd use on the ships to build, uh,
They're converting these uh large containers that they'd use on the ships to build uh restaurants.
They're rebuilding them.
Go ahead.
Yeah. They're repurposing those as building materials?
Correct.
Is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I think I do know what you're talking about. I I mean, I, we would, I guess, first and foremost, that would probably be a a better question for Mr. Maples if he's still on, uh, whether that would even be allowed uh in the township. Um. I mean, if it's a, it's a sustainable material, that's something we could, we could look at. I'm, but again, I'm not sure if that's allowed in the township as building materials.
Uh, this is Joe Maples. There's nothing in the code books pertaining to that. Uh, but there are provisions for other materials that can be possibly approved. Um, I'm not sure aesthetically how they look. I haven't seen any of these, uh, but I know that they have made um residential units out of this as well as other type of commercial uses. Um, so when the time arises, I'm sure we could uh work through any of the difficulties with that. It's just not a uh normal procedure um going strictly through the building code.
Okay, thank you. Because I just, if anybody gets a chance to look at that Taco Bell on Twenty Three Mile and Van Dyke is a beautiful building. And uh, when I saw them putting it up, I go, what the heck is going on? And and the finished product is is really nice building. So thank you very much for including that.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Anyone, any other commissioners? Anyone else with comments?
I I have one other, one other comment, this is Commissioner Shudo. I was just wondering, we're going to start rewriting the sign ordinance. I think that's something we need to do and uh I think we need to expedite that. And I think, I I know with the pandemic and everything going on, but I think our sign ordinance needs to be rewritten, maybe between Tom and Josh. If they can get together, maybe work on that. That's something I think is very important. That's all I have, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Anyone else? Anyone else?
This is Commissioner Bentley.
Yes, Mr. Bentley.
I have a question for um Josh. Um, and that would be related to the special um uh meeting that we have on June thirtieth and um whether or not um the uh the clarification as to where and how that uh meeting is being uh held, that it is not at the township offices. Uh, it will be electronic. If that had any impact, uh, and uh if it caused any uh problems uh with maintaining that June thirtieth date.
No, no, it did not. And we uh, it it will still be electronic and and uh we are good to go with that. Uh, and for anybody who does, for whatever reason, still, you know, missed that message, we will be here at Township Hall, uh, and we can provide them with electronic login information should they show up at at Township Hall that night.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Tom Assorti. Just so everybody's clear, the the, it has been recommended to the board that it continue with uh electronic meetings for all public, all township public bodies um uh through June thirtieth um of this year, which is the end, current end date of um Executive Order twenty twenty dash seventy five, which lays out the rules for electronic meetings.
Mr. Assorti, this is Commissioner Tuckfield. Just a quick question on that. Um, do you have any guidance that specifically says will be required to stop electronic meetings after that? Or is it just like that that's when the current order ends?
The the current order twenty twenty seventy five ends on, it has a termination date of June thirtieth. Um, there is discussion now that it appears that it's gonna go on because there are still other provisions in Executive Order one fifteen that limit meetings to the lesser of, for our particular circumstances, the lesser of fifty persons or twenty five percent capacity of the meeting room while maintaining a six feet distancing um in the in in the boardroom. So the Open Meetings Act doesn't allow a public body to prohibit access to any or some of the public. So.
It would be hard to have those two in conflict because you wouldn't be able, there'd have to be something else because otherwise it would be in conflict with the Open Meetings Act for not allowing people in.
Right, so I think that there, I I know that the uh Michigan Township Association, some of the other groups are pushing on this. I think that we're gonna see another executive order in, on this issue before the end of the month.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Anyone else? All right, then let's go to the McCombs Township Board of Trustees liaison. Mr. Oliver, anything to add tonight?
Yes. Yeah, so you have a couple of things to add. Uh, the Board of Trustees approved, uh, last meeting, they approved the uh, a faster process for the township restaurants to expand the outside eating. And uh, with the need to come back and the need to get these restaurants opened, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to expedite uh restaurants uh to uh allow people to eat outside. But I wa, I wanna add to that, and the only reason why that, the, one of the big reasons why that happened was the help from the planning, the help from commissioners. Uh, we all, everyone got together and put that together really fast. And um, I think it was uh quite a reach uh to get that going to our restaurants and help them out. And uh, I just wanna give a shout out to everyone that helped, uh, mission members, uh, our planning department, our engineering department, it uh worked out well. So uh, that was one thing. The other, the other thing is that the public library is uh phasing in and service and they will be expected to open by July sixth. Uh, phone, phone service is resumed this week during the regular business hours. And that's about all I have and glad to see things are starting to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Uh, ZBA, Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Hardy, uh, I I will say that the ZBA has been extremely quiet. We have actually not had a meeting yet this year. So uh, we are uh looking for, and is one of the reasons I was asking Mr. Uh, Assorti, we have our first uh meeting for the year that we hope to actually accomplish uh on the second of July. And we have a couple of uh items for that. I believe Mr. Box indicated we might have some more. So I'm not sure if we're gonna try to uh pull any meetings ahead or we're gonna be sitting in our regular time slot. But uh, we should actually have our our first meeting coming up here. So I think everybody, as with this board, uh, we're ready to get back to some of the businesses, moving things forward. And uh, yeah, that's uh, that's the report.
All right, thank you, sir. Planning Department, do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing I was gonna point out is is what Mr. Oliver already pointed out, that we do have this uh outdoor seating option for for restaurants to uh provide an expedited review process uh that that launched officially yesterday afternoon. And as of today, we are already working with El Charro Restaurant to get them going and uh hopefully lots more, so.
Sweet.
Very good, thank you. You know what? I forgot to mention something at during the commissioners' comments. So if you'll indulge me for just a minute. Number one, I'd like to again welcome Mr. Box. And number two, I'd like to thank all of you. This went a lot smoother than I thought it would today. And it's just because of your dedication and your commitment to this township that that happened. And last but not least, Ryan, thank you for all of your technical support because we couldn't do this without you. So that's all I have. Do we have a meeting, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mister Chairman, this is uh Member Shudo. I make a motion to adjourn.
It's ordered by Tuckfield.
Ordered by Mr. Tuckfield. Call the roll, please, Mr. Bentley.
Sir, Mister Chairman. Chairman Hardy?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Tuckfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Shudo?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver?
Yes.
Secretary Bentley, yes.
All right, folks, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.